Love Haririgo, good evening. Question to start with: How was your weekend? And how was your week? From last Wednesday to today? And how was your day today? If you want to share it. How was your weekend? How was your week? From last Wednesday to this Wednesday? And how was your day today? And why this question? I will answer it later on. How was your day? How was your weekend? How was your week? Yere kartsun. Orot chapad aver chivampot chapat. Teshbarut yon, any difficulties, challenges? Everything is okay? Everything is okay? No okay? No okay? Okay or no okay? It was not okay? Okay. What you did if it is not okay? I prayed. Anyone not okay? Have you ever read the Bible? Because this is the point. That's why we are learning how to deal with the Bible, how to read the Bible, and how to explain the Bible, and how to convey the Bible to the others. You see? If I do have some difficulties within my days, weekends, weeks, what I am doing? Praying? Okay. Am I reading? What I am reading? What I read? Is it matching with the situation that I am passing through? You see? That's why what I tried to say, reading the Bible or explaining the Bible, it doesn't mean that I know the Bible. I know the passages or the phrases from the Bible. But rather, reading the Bible, understanding the Bible, how to apply the Bible in my daily life? Apply the Bible in my daily life. And an example, let me give you from my experience. Last weekend, as Father Vazken said, "Hach veratsi don", fist of the cross, exaltation of the cross. At the end of the badarak, there was the communion, taking the communion. And somebody came in to get the communion. And he showed himself, asking, "I want to get the communion like this. Put it here." And there, Avi Dishe said, "No. I cannot." He said, "Okay, I will not be able to get it." He said, "Okay, it's up to you." And at the end of the service, we came out and we tried to discuss the issue. We tried to discuss the issue. And we tried to explain it accordingly. What is the thing that you want to get it? He said, "Communion." I said, "What is the meaning of the communion?" He said, "The body and the blood of Jesus Christ." Is it stronger than the virus? Or no? You see the application? Where is the application? Or sometimes we come to the church, we get the communion, as if we have to get the communion? Here is the faith issue. Where is the faith issue? Where is the faith issue? Sometimes we talk about the faith. Yeah, we have the faith. We have the belief. We believe. Where is the faith? Where is the belief? But he said, "You know, no, because there is a virus, there is this and there is that." I said, "Who is stronger? Virus or the communion?" How am I getting the communion? Is it a cultural thing to get the communion? Or is it a matter of faith to get the communion? How about if I am reading the Gospel and the passage where the lepersy, and Jesus said, he went to the leperses, the leper che poroder baragich. He said, "Yeah, but you know, he is Jesus, I'm not the Jesus, but I am the disciple of Jesus Christ." Where is the faith? So this is the issue. When I am reading the Bible, am I trying to apply the Bible in my daily life? Because the Bible is not just a story that we try to read it or to explain it or to understand it. Rather than to live it. That's why the first session that we had it, read the word, read. Reading, exploring, living, applied, applied and leave it. Leave the Bible. Today, we are going to continue the tools. How to understand the passages from the Bible. Last time, as a reminder and as a revision, last time, we tried to find out five tools. The first is the Holy Spirit. As Paul says to his disciple Timothy, "Since the whole book is written through the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, then there is a need to have the Holy Spirit." Without the Holy Spirit, you will not be able to understand any passage. Any passage. You will not be able to understand. Understand it doesn't mean understand what it says, but understand it means how to apply in my life, in my daily life. So the first tool is the Holy Spirit. The second, have a general introduction about the book. The historical, the geographical, the cultural, the social, the religious settings. This is why we have to ask the following question. When it is written? Under what circumstances it is written? Whom it is written for? Why it is written? The third tool is understand the Bible through the Bible. That means, if there are some passages we can't understand it, so try to find some parallel passages that it shows us either the wording or the phrases that it helps us to understand much more clearly the passage that we try to understand it. Sure order, choosing the authentic text. And last time, we talked about that there are so many translations in different languages, but since the original text has been written Greek and Hebrewic, then we have at least, if not we, but it's a kind of must that at least to have a kind of understanding the Greek language and the Hebrewic language. Yet ad has katso tshunatuning Hebrewic and Greek language. It should be... That's why when we are trying to find out the text, the translated text, it should be much more close to the original text and not just a translation, because we do have so many type of translations of the Bible. And when we say translation, it means different kinds of wording. And just recently, I was talking with Barton. I showed him an example and we are going to see that example too. What does it mean translating the words of the Bible? Translating, it doesn't mean just translate the word by word, but also translate the meaning, the concept. The fifth tool is understand the passage within its context. That means, when I am trying to understand a phrase, a word, a sentence, be careful, don't take it out of its context. And this is a special tool using from the Jehovah Witnesses. They came up with a wording, some words, and they say, "This is what the Bible says. This is what Saint Paul says. But be careful when it says, where it says, whom it says." So don't take it out of its context. And when I say context, it means the main context, the big context, which is the Bible itself, immediate context, which is the book itself, and much more immediate context, which is the passage itself. For example, if I am going to try to explain some wording from the Gospel of Matthew, first I have to have in mind the Bible itself. Then the Book of, or the Gospel of Matthew, then the passage or the chapter of that verse or the word that it comes from. The six tools. The tool. In case of contradictory passages, we have to find some parallel verses. Sometimes we find out that there are some passages or verses that it contradicts itself. And that's why let's try to make some examples. If you do have your Bibles, not the book for sure, if the book, that's fine, but I think your cell phones, the iPhones, and come up with the passage, Book of Acts, Chapter 9. Book of Acts, Chapter 9. And if, can somebody read for us? Book of Acts, Chapter 9, and verse 7. Anybody home? Book of Acts, Chapter 9, Verse 7. Yeah, Chapter 9, Verse 7. Okay. Read again, yeah. So they heard the sound, but see, no one. Chapter 22, Verse 9. Book of Acts. Chapter 22, Verse 9. From this side. Is it contradictory or not? Bart, is what you read. They heard the sound? Chapter 7. Chapter 9, Verse 7, yes. Chapter 9, Verse 7. They heard the sound, see no one. Chapter 22. Yeah, Verse 9. They heard nothing. They heard something. They heard nothing. They see not, they saw no one. They saw someone. Is it contradictory or not? It is. It is. So in the Bible, there are some contradictory passages. That's why they come in and they say, "You see, there are some contradictory passages." How am I going to believe for this type of book where there are contradictory passages? But actually, it's not a contradictory passage, but it's a fulfilling passage. It's a complimentary passage. It completes one another. Read again, Bartis. What type of sound they heard? Sound. They heard sound. Are you hearing now sound? Sound of air conditioning, AC sound. There is a sound, it's a sound, but it's not the voice that I am speaking now. So it means when they are traveling with Paul, Book of Acts, the author of Book of Acts, who is Luke himself, the author, the writer Luke, when he is explaining or presenting the event that Paul had it on the road of Damascus, he is trying to explain as if the man with Paul, with Saul, they just heard the sound, but not the voice, exactly the wording, or you know, the speech that he himself, Paul himself, he heard it about. And the passage that Paul himself is presenting the event, he said, "The man with me..." Yeah, the voice of him, you see? More details. So it means it's not contradictory, actually. It's not contradictory. What we need, dig it out, use the tools, not just read it, not just read it and not just take it as it is and say, "Oh yeah, it's contradictory." Dig it out. To find out what's the relation between these two passages. Another example, Matthew 27:5. Matthew 27:5. Matthew 27, Verse 5. So Judas, he hang himself. Book of Acts, Chapter 1, 18. Chapter 1, 18, Book of Acts. Where is the word "hang"? There is no word "hang." So how to explain verse, Chapter 27 of Matthew and Book of Acts? It's about the event of Judas. He hang himself in Matthew, but nothing in Book of Acts. How to explain it? Is it contradictory? Yes? Alan, is it contradictory? Yes? Artson, contradictory passage. Matthew 27, Verse 5. Book of Acts 1:18. Barton, is it contradictory? Contradict itself? Read it again. Garo, why not? Okay. Okay, what type of perspective? Yeah, one is hang itself, the other one, he fell. So how to understand? No. He has to hang and then fall down. Is it possible? It's possible. But look, how they took out the passages out in order to show us is it authentic to read the Bible or not? Because the issue is the authenticity of the Bible. And such a passages, they took it out. Is it reliable to read the Bible if you can find such contradictory passages within the Bible? Okay. Hach Orte. The purpose of each book. When you read the Gospel of John, Chapter 20, Verse 31, it says what is the purpose of this Gospel. And why it is important to know the purpose of the book or the purpose of the Gospel or the purpose of the Book of Acts or the purpose of the Book of, you know, Jeremiah or Ezekiel? Why it is important to know the purpose of the book? Because this is how the author approaches and presents the events. Aduramar, an example. When we read the Gospel in all four Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, they come and they say, "Where was Jesus from this age to this age?" Where was Jesus? Nothing mentioned in the Gospel. So what will be my approach? What will be my answer for this question? That's why when you read the Gospel of John, Chapter 20, Verse 31, it says, anybody can read, Chapter 20, Verse 31, Gospel of John. Daniel. Verse 31, Chapter 20. Can you read Verse 30, then 31? Which is not written in this book, and then? So this is the purpose of John, that writing this Gospel. Then how come you are asking me, "Where was Jesus from this age to this age?" The purpose of John is not to present us, "Where was Jesus from this age to this age?" The purpose of John was to show just few miracles, which is written in this book, to show that Jesus was Christ, the Son of God. This is his purpose. Where was Jesus? How come from this age to this age it's not mentioned about Jesus? It's not the question to answer for this book if I am reading the Gospel of John as well as the other Gospels. So the approach that we are, we do have the approach about the Gospels is totally, I mean, it's the wrong way. Supposedly, you do have a book about Bedros Turian, and suddenly I am asking, "Where is his mom?" So it is very important to know the purpose of each book and it gives us more insight. It gives us more, so to say, explanation. 2 Peter, Chapter 3, Verses 1 to 2. 2 Peter. Delilah. 2 Peter, Chapter 3, Verse 1 to 2. 2 Peter. Chapter 3, Verses 1 to 2. 2 Peter. Okay, 1 and 2, I said. Okay, this means, this means he himself, Peter himself, he is trying to show that this is the second letter. If it is the second letter, it means there is a first letter. And with these two letters, I am trying to remind you. To remind you of what? Be pure-minded. So the purpose of this letter to show, to remind the reader to be pure-minded, being like Jesus Christ. Sometimes, if it is not explicit the purpose of the book, then reading several times, we can find out. It is a must to know the purpose in order to understand the given passage or the phrase accordingly. Examples, Romans, Chapter 1, 17. Romans, Chapter 1, 17. Andrew. Okay. Andrew. Romans, Chapter 1, 17. Okay, justification by faith. The wonderful passage for the... Okay. Barton. Make the parallel. Chapter 3, 20. Romans, Chapter 3, 20. Romans, Chapter 3, 20. So justification by faith. Justification by faith is not by the laws, but justification by faith. By faith. Okay, Chapter 3, Verses 22, 28. Through faith, Jesus Christ. Justice is through faith. Galatians, Chapter 2, 16. Galatians, Chapter 2, 16. Lucine. Not by the words, but justification by faith. Chapter 3, 11. Kevort. Justification by faith. Comparing with James, Daniel. James, Chapter 2, 22 to 26. James, 22 to 26, Chapter 2. 22 to 26. So contradictory? Paul's and James' letters. Paul emphasizing justification by faith. James is saying not only by faith, but also by word. Contradictory? How? What type of works? Exactly. Work by, has been done that through the faith. Because actually, what Paul's emphasizing in his letters against those that they are emphasizing the work of the law, the commandments. And he is saying nobody can be justified just by doing the laws, the commandments. Because when you read 1 Timothy, read 1 Timothy, Chapter 6, Verses 18 and 19. Paul himself to his disciple. 1 Timothy, Chapter 6, 18 and 19. Ani. The good works. And he is saying that justification only by faith, not by the works. And in his letter to Timothy, he says, "Have the good works." 2 Timothy, Chapter 3, 17. 2 Timothy, Chapter 3, 17. Good works. What type of works? Through the faith. Faith and works go together. Not only faith, but the Jizah says sometimes we come up with, you know, some preachers or some believers emphasizing only faith. Do you believe? You are saved. Do you believe? Justified. And they are quoting, using the phrases or the passages from Paul himself, saying, "Look, Paul says justification by faith." And most of the Protestants, they emphasize this. Justification by faith. You have faith? Done. You are saved. But what type of, what type of faith we are talking about? What type of, you know, what kind of faith we are, he is emphasizing for? Because actually, that's the purpose also to understand what was the purpose of Paul when he was writing Galatians? What was purpose of Paul when he was writing Romans? And especially, he was writing for those who were emphasizing the law, the mosaic law. And especially, they were emphasizing the circumcision. You have been circumcised? Done. You are children of God. Children of Abraham. The promise, yes? You see? Okay. Hach Orte. The structure of the given book. We have to know, at least, what is the structure of the given book? When I say the structure, for example, if you read Gospel of Matthew comparing with the Gospel of Luke, they do have different structures. Matthew, he tries, Chapters 5 to 7, he tries to present the teachings of Jesus Christ. Then he tries to present the miracles and the healings of Jesus Christ and back then to the teachings of Jesus Christ and back then, the end days of Jesus Christ. When you read Book of Luke, the Gospel of Luke, he presents chronologically the beginning for the Zacharias, John the Baptist, Elizabeth and Maryam the meeting, and then Jesus Christ the word. You see the structure that we have to, to have in mind for presenting or to explaining, we have to have in mind what type of structure they use it. But sometimes, the authors, they like to gather together the events. And we think as if this morning, early morning, Jesus wake up. He did the teaching. He finishes up within two days. And he went to... and he went to rest. When you read the Gospel of Matthew, as if, as if, teaching, he have done. Which means Matthew, he tries to group, to get together the events, the healings, the teachings, and then to present it. But for the case of Luke, it's not the same things. So it's good to have in mind the structure of the given book. Nine, understanding the words accordingly. Here we do have some examples. Body, if you read in Romans, chapter 320, it says the person. If you read in Isaiah 40, chapter 40, verse 5, and 1 Timothy, chapter 316, it means human. When you read in Galatians, chapter 3, verse 3, it means Jewish sacrificial life. The body, the word body, using the word body, you see how many different meaning we can come up? Blood, in Matthew, chapter 27, verse 24 to 25, it means sin. Let his blood be on us. When they used to crucify him, you know, the Pharisees, the law teachers, they say, let his blood be on us. So in this passage, it means sin. In another passage, X, chapter 7, 26, it means the origin. In Romans, chapter 5, verse 9, and in Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 7, it means sacrifice. So the same wording, blood, but different meanings. So accordingly, we have to have in mind the context, the real meaning, the exact meaning, the literal meaning, or the symbolic meaning of each wording that is used. For a special words, find parallel passages. Example, Galatians 327. Alan, Galatians 327. Put on Christ, okay. Parallel verses, Revelation 3, 4 to 5. Put on Christ. What does it mean, put on Christ? Chapter 3, first 4 to 5, yes, Revelation. Okay, dressing. So Galatians 327, what does it mean, put on Christ? Put on Christ. Andrew. Put on Christ. What does it mean, put on Christ? Garo, what does it mean, put on Christ? Okay, how, when you find the parallel passages, Revelation, chapter 3, verse 4 to 5, those who never spoiled their garments, the clothes. To live in us. Christ living in us. Okay, supposedly, Christ living in us, putting on him, on myself, on me. Yeh vara velit, means the characteristic value. How am I going to live as Christ-like life, as Christians? Which means mindset. It's not enough. Adonim, Galatians, therefore, the Hossin, Galatians, it says, change your mindset and be like Christ-minded. When I'm put on Christ, when I'm being baptized, and put on Christ, it's not enough, I've been baptized, okay? Good for you, we have been baptized. But each change, derey un et sate. And change, it means, take off the old one, the old man, the human one, the Adam one, and put on the new one, Christ-likeness. Yeh Adonim, this means, when I'm explaining to someone who has been baptized, what does it mean, been baptized? It's not just the, just the ritual, just the service that we are doing in the church, but it should be something changed, change derey vidunina. And that's why during the baptism, when the baby or the the adult, whoever is, coming in, they come with their regular clothing. After the baptism, they are wearing the white garment. The same as in the Book of Revelation, those, they never spoiled, the garment, the clothes. White cloth, three days later, which means not the clothes, rather the characteristic, the mindsetting, the thinking, the way that I'm thinking, the way that I'm living my Christian life, the faith. Understand, now understand the phrases accordingly. Ecclesiastes, chapter 3, verse 19-20. Ecclesiastes, chapter 3, verse 19-20. Who is going to read? Chapter 3. All humans are like animals, dying, having the same ending. Is it true? Yes? According to Ecclesiastes, it's true. But it's a statement, or it's an opinion, or giving an idea. And that's why when I says, finding out some phrases, some sentences, which is not very much clear, then we have to find some parallel passages within the Bible. And in order to understand, read the same Ecclesiastes, chapter 12, verse 5 to 7. So how to understand the verse, chapter 3, 19, and the verse, chapter 12, 5 to 7? In order to understand much more better, Psalms 49. Psalm 49, verse 12 and 20. Who is like the beast? The man who is what? He is like an animal. So when we read the Ecclesiastes, and they say, or he said, the man, the ending of the man and the animals are the same, what type of man he is talking about? Those, they are ignorant and they don't have the knowledge of God. But rather, chapter 12, it says, to dust it goes the dust, and the soul it goes to the house where it belongs to. And what does this mean? That the spirit is undying. It goes to the house that it comes from. This are then explanations, when I'm trying to find out parallel passages within the Bible. The last point, to get familiar with symbols and figurative language. Romans, chapter 2, 25 to 29. Romans, chapter 2, 25 to 29. So talking about circumcision, circumcised, not circumcised. Where it comes from, the idea of circumcision? Old Testament. Ezra. Isaac. At the, on the eighth day of the male born, you have to circumcise as a sign. So when here Paul talks about circumcision, what does he mean? Circumcised, not circumcised. Literally meaning circumcised or not circumcised. Literally meaning circumcised or not circumcised. So make a parallel passage, Ephesians, chapter 2, 11. Chapter 2, 11, Ephesians. Chapter 2, verse 11. So who are the uncircumcised? The Gentiles. So circumcision, it doesn't mean literally circumcision, but rather he is speaking about the Gentiles and the Jews. So when he's referring to circumcision, he's not referring to physical circumcision, rather than the spiritual circumcision. As in the, in the physical circumcision, when God commanded to circumcise, circumcising, it means getting out some part of your body, physically. And when he's speaking about the spiritual circumcision, it means cut off from your thoughts, from your minds, from your thinking, from your mindset, the things that is, or they are obstacles to you with your relationship with God. So if you are a pagan, what type of mindset do you have? If not, the worship of paganism. No relationship with God. Not the physical circumcision, rather the spiritual circumcision. And that's why the Jews, they were against Paul, since he was not preaching pro-circumcision, or, but rather he was preaching against circumcision as a physical circumcision. And the last example. Let's read Matthew, chapter 10, 16. Chapter 10, 16. It's a figurative language, we had to be familiar with the figurative language also. Chapter 10, verse 16. Barton. Okay, Jesus speaking with the disciple, saying, I am now sending you as sheep among the wolves. Be wise as serpent and as innocent as dove. Okay, four different types of animal. Sheep, wolf, serpent, dove. So each one of them, they do have special characteristic. And we are a kind of familiar with the animal characteristic or the symbolism. Like for example, on the flag, sometimes we see the lion, on the flag. What does this mean? Power. Okay, sometimes we see on pharmacy sign, the serpent. What does this mean, symbolically? Wise, wisdom? Have you ever seen serpent on pharmacy, pharmacy? What does this mean, symbolically? Healing? And I don't know if you've ever seen, the pharmacy, it's a cup, and surrounded by the snake. But suddenly, in the Gospel, in the Bible, when you read about the serpent in the Book of Genesis, suddenly there is another meaning of the serpent. The devil as the first serpent, he came in, and he deceived the man. When you read Book of Revelation, there it says the serpent, the first serpent. Talking about the devil, the Satan. So how come Jesus sending his disciple and asking them or saying, be wise as the serpent? So which serpent you have to be? The first serpent in the Garden of Eden? Or the one that he is referring to? The wisdom, the wise, the wiseness of the serpent? Which means, if you are going as a disciple to preach the gospel, how am I going to send you like a sheep? What does it mean, sheep? Harmless, innocent, ready to be sacrificed. So be, have in mind, since I'm to send, I'm going to send you, be ready. Why be ready? Because actually, I am sending you where? Among the wolves. Among the wolves. So who are the wolves? Friend of you. Friend, wolves are not friend. They are going to attack. They are going to harm. As when you read Book of Acts, chapter 20, Paul says, now I am leaving, and after me, they are going to come in, who? The wolves. Who are the wolves? The preachers, that they are going to deceive. The preachers that they are going to teach, not orthodoxy, not the exact teaching of Jesus Christ. So they are kind of wolves. They are going to attack, they are going to harm. So be wise accordingly. Be wise accordingly. Deep down, go to the roots. To discern what's going on, which is a gift from the Holy Spirit, discernment. Yeah, be, at the end, be like a dove. The translation, what it says, be innocent like dove. Translation, it says, be innocent like dove. What does it mean, miyamid? Single-minded. But since I am sending you, suddenly, the harm, the attack will cause, change your mind. So don't, don't change your mind. Be single-minded, one-minded. You see? So we have to be familiar with the phrases, symbols, expressions, numbers, animal kinds. What it helps us to understand much better about the passages that we are trying to explain it. Thank you so much. Any question? So for the next time, read accordingly. Not just read the Bible, but read accordingly. Any question? Any question? The right one and the wrong one, it means how they translate the passage or the Bible. And translating the passage or the Bible, it doesn't mean just translating the wording. But also, we have to have in mind the origin text, which is the Greek text. Adonar Arjay Iman Albor, the given book that has been translated, which source has they use it? The source Greek, or from translation to translation? Second point, when they are translating, they have to mention in the introduction that what type of, or what way of translation they use it. Translating literally, translating by phrase, translating by meaning. So, and not just reading the Bible. And last time, we talked about the critical text. To choose which one is much more closer to the original text. And when I say the original text, it means the Greek. If the Greek text image, we do have several manuscripts, handwriting. So this is professionally must over. But it's much more, I suppose, which translation is much more appropriate? Most of the time, we accept the New King James Version. Be like innocent, like dove, what does it mean, innocent? What does it mean, innocent? Is it means simple-minded, innocent? This man is innocent. I don't know the English, exactly, the meaning of English. What does it mean, innocent? This man is innocent. Okay. So be single-minded. Yes, accordingly, yes, I will get the commitment to be the disciple of Jesus Christ. Because actually, they are getting the commitment. Now I am sending you, now he's going to send me. Let me have in mind those, the characteristics, the animal symbolism. Am I ready to get them or not? I finished the studies, I got my PhD, now I am ready to preach, okay. Hold on. In order to start to preach. Now I am sending you, he is the one who is sending me. I'm not the one who is going to. There is someone who is sending me. Daniel Hartson? Yeah, verse 10, chapter 10. Chapter 10, verse 16. The word innocent, pure mind, but the attack and the tribulation, it caused you to change your mind. To do some evil things too. To change your path. I will give up. From the beginning, he is putting, you know, the exact condition, how to be the disciple of Jesus Christ. Exactly. Actually, no. Yet this was the first period of preaching the gospel for the disciples. The first period of the preaching of the disciples, this was the condition. Pharisees, said, who sees them, law teachers, oh, thank you so much that you are explaining, you know? Who is Jesus, the Nazaret, the divine, oh, thank you. Thank you so much, it was good lecture. Preaching the gospel, this is not the preaching the gospel. And in John, the Gospel, chapter 10, when he says, I know my sheep, they know me, and the one who is the shepherd is not the one. But who is the owner of the sheep? Jesus himself. So what is my position then, preaching the gospel? And that's what Paul says in Book of Acts, chapter 20. I am leaving now, after my going out, they will come up, the wolves, among you. The division of the church. What is it about? The wolves. You can feel how they came in. But he's trying to preach, not. And another example, or another meaning for the dove, Book of Genesis, the story of Noah. So it means, when you are going to preach, also you do have the character of peace-making. Not just preaching, but also to bring up Jesus' peace. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.